The order, the Town of St. John Redevelopment Commission regular meeting for December 23rd, 2024. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Gerald Swetts.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Mike Bovat.
Here.
Wayne Pondinos.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Item four, approval of minutes, A, the November 21st, 2024, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item five, new business. New business, no. Item six, financial matters, nope. Item seven, ordinance and resolution. A, motion to adopt resolution 2024-12-23A, a resolution of the St. John Redevelopment Commission approving further amendments to the St. John Economic Development Area One and its allocation areas, and amending the economic development plan for the St. John Economic Development Area One, and all matters related thereto. Billy, could you comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. So, when we took a look at EDA One, we seen that there was maintenance that wasn't done over the years. Through our help with Barnes and Thornburg, we were able to eliminate 28 properties that were having a down drag on our Tiff District, our EDA, in the amount of about 15 million. With these changes and with this pruning of EDA One, we're looking at about $170,000 swing that we will start getting. We've also expanded EDA One to add the Family Express, and also create two allocation areas, one at the old Kmart site, and one at the southeast corner of 93rd and 41.
Thank you for that.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-12-23A.
I'll second. Go ahead, Ann.
I second.
I have a motion by Vice President Jorgensen, a second by Ann Oster. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. B, motion to adopt resolution 2024-12-23B, a resolution of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, binding through its redevelopment commission, approving a spending plan for calendar year 2025. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Item eight, reports and correspondence. Billy, any reports or correspondence?
No reports at this time.
Item nine, any public comment? I didn't see anything that anyone had signed up for the... Item 10, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Call to order for the Town of St. John Town Council meeting, December 23rd, 2024. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for just a moment, a moment of silence, and maybe just keep our troops in mind, many of those who will not be able to be home and be with family and friends. Thank you. Roll call, Beth.
Gerald Swetts.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Mike Bovat.
Here.
Wayne Pondinos.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
And at this time, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Dell DiMaio, DiMaio Retail, and he's been working with the town council here. He's done tremendous work throughout the state, well-known, and we'd like him to address the council at this time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Bovat. Members of the council, we're excited here today to talk a little bit about a project that we've been working hard on for about two years. So, as you guys well know, there's been a Kmart here in town that's been vacant for a long time, and we're really excited to say that we've made tremendous headway in the last about 12 months on an agreement with a number of provisions that require us to meet certain deadlines and other things in order to finalize a deal. But we are incredibly excited to move forward and talk about the opportunity to bring Jewel Osco to St. John, and what that's going to require. And that's why we're here in front of you, is that this is a large project that has a lot of expenses, and we need a little bit of assistance from the town. And in working with the town, it's been, it's been really just an incredible experience for the citizens of this town, should be really excited to know the people that are running this here, from President Bovat to Councilmember Jorgensen, and then obviously, it's been great interacting with Councilmember Pondinos, and then also Beth Hernandez at the Clerk's office has been phenomenal, and then also spearheaded by Bill Manassopoulos. So, it's been great. And we've worked on, we've had, as I know that some of the folks here have approved our first leg of our project, which has been exciting, to get the access point down to 96th Street. As you well know, there's an existing access point that's up against Wicker Avenue, and this new access point will allow folks to access 96th Place, and flow traffic out of the, out of the project and out of the grocery store. So, we're excited today. We've got some renderings, which we had sent to Bill, and I know that everyone here has seen. So, the building is really going to look great. We've got a brand-new 20-year commitment from them, should we be able to get everything done that we need to get done, which is exciting. And I'm here for questions, and here to take any thoughts or whatever the town has, as far as any questions you might have.
So, I have a question. So, assuming that we've been working with you, we're going to approve everything that we can approve, do you anticipate any things that's going to sidetrack that or delay it, the decision? I mean, is there state approvals that are needed, or are there ground, I don't know, anything else that might slow this thing down, if we do everything we need to do?
Yeah, we've got some minor approvals that we need from an adjacent property owners that we've already gone through down the path with, with Chase on those approvals. Obviously, we've got to get full construction plans approved and all those things done, but we don't really see any issues with that.
That's with the town.
Yeah, what's that?
That's with the town. So, do you see anything outside of what we can control?
No, and the state, the state will review all of our construction plans as well, which will be, I don't see any issues from that. But no, I think we should be good to go. The biggest thing is getting over some of these hurdles, to make sure that all of our construction numbers come in line. That's really the biggest challenge with the project, since COVID hit, is the construction pricing, as everybody's very aware of, is really expensive right now. So, that's what, what we're working through.
Thank you, it's exciting.
Yeah.
Del, and I know we've talked about it, could you talk about the size of the store, and some of the things that, you know, based on the Diamond location, that this is based off of the Diamond, Illinois, location, that it's based off of what we could be looking forward to as a possibility of what can be in that store?
Yeah, so, the store is actually, we've decided, the operator in the grocery store has decided to keep a large majority of the building. So, it's going to be approximately 70,000 square feet. And what's really great about it is, is this going to be their premium brand store, which is exactly what they have in Diamond, Illinois, as well. So, you've got all the pre-prepared foods. If anyone's been to a newer Jewel Osco in the city of Chicago, you've seen pre-prepared foods and items that are there for take-home, to go. There's also going to be a Starbucks in the store, which is part of something that they offer, so you can get your coffee or drink, whatever you want, right, when you start your shopping. But it's going to be their higher-end offering, as far as this store goes. So, they're, it's going to have all the sushi items and things like that, that they typically offer in their stores as well.
And then, as far as any other projects that you've done in the area, I know you worked on a couple of big projects.
Yeah.
Here in Northwest Indiana, could you elaborate a little bit on those?
Yeah, so, actually, this-
Just of how big your other projects are.
Sure, we've just completed, and actually just delivered a week and a half ago to the state of Indiana, a brand-new BMV for Northwest Indiana, over in Marriville, if anyone's familiar with, and we actually worked with your same attorney here for Marriville. So, yeah, we've just completed a 12,000-square-foot BMV, which is the largest BMV in the state of Indiana, that also has all of the fleet services and every other service that's offered at a BMV. And we're really excited, we've got a number of new projects as well for Northwest Indiana. So, you guys have a lot of great growth up here, as you well know, through all of the new residential growth, and a lot of exciting stuff, especially with what you guys have coming to town with the hospital, is really going to be, I think, exciting. But yeah.
Any requirements by the state, it's not something new to you or your company, this is just business as usual?
That's correct, yep, yep. This is just what we do. We're, our firm specifically, DiMaio Retail, we work with tenants and users, and that's, we're not really on the landlord's side, we don't represent many landlords at all, we do some work for ourselves, but really what we do is we focus on tenants. So, restaurants, retailers, wherever folks eat out or spend dollars at, that's really what we focus on. So, we're really excited about this partnership with, with the Albertsons Company, and specifically with Jewel Osco, because they are such a great name up in Northwest Indiana and Chicago as well. I think it's really going to be a great asset, as well as their, their pricing and competitive-wise for the shoppers of St. John, I think is going to be a real positive. That's really been the feedback, I think we've heard the most, has been how excited the people in this community are for some, for the Jewel Osco name, and to have some other options for shopping.
I think shopping and the, the removal of what we consider an ISO on 41, you know, is top-notch. And, and I know you went through your list, and I know after the last election, you guys had conversations early on, and I just wanted to make sure that we also recognize Ann Oster, who blew up my phone every day, asking me to call you and see what's going on, and-
Yeah, well, we appreciate your patience, and, and obviously, Ann, I think as you can imagine, and my partner Jennifer is here as well, our, our group, our company, has been that same feeling, maybe a little more, trying to get some answers back. So, we appreciate your patience, and it's been a, it's been a great process, and they are a large company, so it's been part of working through that. And we're excited that this is going to be the first new Jewel Osco Northwest Indiana in over 20 years, is going to be in St. John. So, it's a, it's really a great thing for your community.
It is, Del, and there's going to be a pharmacy as well, right?
Yep.
Because that's all tied to, to the Osco portion, correct?
Right, and a drive-through pharmacy.
Right, it's all one now.
Yep.
That's great.
I think there was going to be like, are they still intending to maybe have a sushi bar with outside dining, possibly, or?
Well, it's, it's part of their, kind of their prepared meals portion, so they have seating inside the store, depending on how it all works out from a planning standpoint outside, but there will definitely be seating inside the store, and I think they're planning on some seating outside of the store as well. But those final plans are being drawn up right now. So, we're going to have all of those hope to be completed here by the end of March, and maybe potentially April, end of April, for some review back and forth. We would really love to have the plans fully submitted to the state of Indiana for approval, you know, by early summer, that they could again get those approvals and come back to the town for final approval. So, but we're really excited, and we're pushing hard to go as fast as possible, so.
Do you think construction could begin at the end of 2025, or are we looking at 2026?
We're hoping it's going to begin mid, late mid to end of 2025, is the goal. Yeah, so, ideally, we, we plan to start no later than the end of September.
Fantastic.
I'd like to personally say that, you know, myself, Wayne, and Christian, I mean, we just, the opportunities we've had to interact with you, and for you to kind of correspond to us and communicate, like, just like, I don't know if people can really grasp the enormity of it, like, just the obstacles and the challenges and many things, and I think we were all pretty fortunate to have Dell DiMaio and DiMaio Retail to come in and to get this accomplished. Have you ever had situations where you've gone into communities and it maybe just didn't work out for you, or what?
We've had some definite communities that have been a real challenge, and that's what's been such a, I mean, very frankly, a breath of fresh air up in Northwest Indiana from, we had some great interaction in Marriville. The, the experience with the, the Town of St. John has really been phenomenal. You guys have been on the forefront, and I know that this has been a back-and-forth property for you, as far as issues, but it's really been great to work with you, and to see what, the focus that you've had on getting this done. And I, we just know that what this is going to trigger in the future around this site, is just going to be more and more and more improvements, because anytime you make this improvement in that trade area, it's going to just fix stuff across the street, down the street. And it's also going to get more retailers to look at the Town of St. John, and get more critical mass in here, which is all going to be a positive for your tax base.
Absolutely.
We remember when we met with you, you seemed like you shared our vision, you know, and the goal of majority of this council is just to grow the economic part, and to bring in the tax base, and it'd be an asset to the citizens, and have like a flagship grocery chain like Jewel, that's, I think it will be a real benefit, it truly will.
Yeah.
I can imagine, I'll probably see my colleague, Mr. Pondinos, in there, he's a, he's a good shopper, so.
Well, you made it through Marriville with Joe and Sean Pettit, so, if you made it through those two, I mean, I can't imagine, this will be like a cakewalk for you.
Well, Councilman Jorgensen, he did make it through Marriville with Sean and myself, but credit to the town on such a fantastic project, but a credit to the town counts on really hard work. But congratulations on bringing a high-level trusted developer to the town as well. So, my compliments to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Your reputation precedes you.
Some of the, some of that stuff that you had said, that's not always cut in stone, like your sushi bar, there's, you know, I know how the public is, things can change, so, it's more than likely going to happen, but it, you know, there was mention that, you know, sometimes it changes. But now, you're the developer, it's, you're getting out the bond, so it's no cost to the town.
Right.
It's, it's great, it's going to be a great thing.
Yeah, it is. And, and actually, I think what really has helped solidify those, those services and those features as part of this grocery, is the opening in Diamond went so well for Jewel Osco at their most recent grocery opening, so, and that was that, that kind of new prototype, so that's what's really going to trigger it here. I think that's, I think it's probably what you're going to see. Obviously, things always do change, but I think you'll, I think that ultimately will be what happens here as well.
Well, I said, like, with what Christian said, having someone of your caliber, Del, I mean, for that area to be that dormant for that long, and to actually get something going, I mean, we're excited.
Yeah.
We're grateful, thank you.
And I'm grateful the fact that you also use skilled labor.
Yeah.
And, and, and work with our local unions, that's, it's important to me, and I know it's important to some others on our council here, and, and, and that's great. And that's, you know, putting more people in our local area to work. It's, it's a great project.
Yeah.
Great project.
Really excited. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate it, and-
Thank you, Del.
Thank you for making the trip this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
You got to head back to Indy, or? Del, are you, I'm sorry. Are you-
Heading to go meet with the architect for this.
Are you planning on staying till the end of the meeting? Because if not, we can, we'd like to take a picture, and then we can send you on if you, if you have another meeting to get to.
I think we're on time, right? I think we're good for a little bit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item five, agenda items. A, financial matters of the corporation, accounts payable voucher dated December 23rd, 2024, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of $1,868,815.45. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Wilbur.
B, ordinances and resolutions. One, motion to adopt ordinance 1849, and ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the town to issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds relating to housing projects to be located in the St. John Economic Development Area Four, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
So, we have Mr. Tom Everett here from Barnes and Thornburg for any other questions. Obviously, I know we've talked about this before, this is the creation of the allocation area, EDA Four, and I'll leave it to Tom.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning, Tom.
Tom Everett from Barnes and Thornburg in South Bend. As Billy mentioned, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of six series of bonds for the projects in EDA Four, which the Redevelopment Commission has adopted a declaratory resolution to create Economic Development Area Four. The St. John Plan Commission approved the creation of EDA Four, and today, later today, the town council will consider a resolution approving the creation of Economic Development Area Four as well. And then, after that, the Redevelopment Commission in January will hold a public hearing and take final action to adopt that. But here for first reading today are the bonds that go along with the creation of Economic Development Area Four. And so, the bonds are for six of the allocation areas that are being established for Economic Development Area Four. Two of them are age-restricted areas, and will have age-restricted bonds for up to 25 years. And then, there are also bonds associated with four of the residential allocation areas, which will have a maximum length of 20 years for the bonds for those residential areas. This ordinance is up for first reading today, and will be considered for final adoption next month, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the town council may have.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone?
So, of this development, how many are age-restricted, and are there any duplexes involved? I see everything listed, that I see is single-family.
So, there are two age-restricted areas, there's the G-32 age-restricted area and the G-33 age-restricted area. Within G-32, it's, it's, if you look at the second, the third, whereas clause on the first page, there's 71 single-family detached units planned there. And in the G-33 area, there are approximately 62 single-family detached units planned there. So, these are all, at this point in the planning, single-family detached housing.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1849?
I move to adopt ordinance 1849.
This one was just up for first reading today.
Yes.
So, we were anticipating that final action and second reading, and a vote would take place at the January meeting.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, this is first reading, yes.
It's, it, consider.
Yes, consider.
I mean, the motion to adopt.
You got to consider it first.
Consider motion to adopt ordinance-
I'd like to demand yours, Christian, to consider.
Motion to consider ordinance.
Okay, motion to consider ordinance 1849.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries-
Mr. President?
Yes.
Was that the motion for 1849?
1849, 1849.
Or 1850?
1849.
Okay.
And it was a motion to consider adoption of ordinance 1849.
On first reading.
Yes. Item two, motion to adopt ordinance 1850, and ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, designating areas within the town as economic development areas.
I mean, I've got this, I mean, we've been through all this, so, I mean-
The creation of the allocation areas.
Yeah.
In, in the EDA.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider, move it to adopt, but consider ordinance 1850 on first reading.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number three, motion to adopt resolution number 2024-12-23, resolution of the Town of St. John Town Council approving the establishment of the St. John Economic Development Area Four, the economic development plan for said area, the establishment of a residential housing program, and an age-restricted housing program, in all matters related thereto.
And on this one, it's, it was word in your motion, it's the economic development plan, the establishment of the housing, and the age-restricted.
Yep, so, is this identical then to 1849, or are there duplexes and so on involved in this?
I think the breakdown was in there, and I can get that right over to you, Jerry, after the meeting. I think it was in the original package.
I need that answer in order to vote on this thing.
Well, I don't need to, to make a motion. I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 2024-12-23 on first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I think it's a, a motion to adopt resolution, since it's a resolution.
Oh, yeah, we got a resolution. It is a motion to adopt.
Yes.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Number six, town council action, consider a reduction to the existing cash escrow LOC for the Gates of St. John, Unit 21B, 22, 24B, and 25, from $64,555 to 25% of their value, to $16,207 for a two-year maintenance period.
So, at the Plan Commission meeting on December 18th, the Plan Commission sent a favorable recommendation to law for the reduction in the cash escrow for the units listed, read off by yourself, Mr. President. They have met all the requirements to meet the 25%, or to reduce to the 25% as allowed by the subdivision control ordinance. We would then release the about $46,000 back to the developer, and we would retain the remaining for a two-year period.
Okay.
We'll be releasing a total of $48,618 in the cash escrow.
Thank you.
I'm clear on that, any questions?
Billy, what kind of, what kind of action do you want?
I'm sorry?
What kind of action do you want on this one?
We're looking for-
Reduce the escrow.
No, 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 I, I understand, but I mean, to make the proper motion?
Yes, a proper motion.
Approval.
Approval.
Just approval?
Approval of the amount stated in the, in the item.
Okay, okay. How about this? I make a motion to approve item 6A, the reduction in existing cash escrow for the Gates of St. John, Unit 21B.
22, 24B, and 25. I have a motion-
22, 24B, and 25, correct.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Reports and correspondences, town council, any comments from anyone?
I'd like to wish all our employees a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. If you're traveling, traveling, safety. I want to- I want to thank Dell and his partner for coming today, thank you so much, and thank you for playing Santa Claus today, it worked out good. So, it's been a pleasure talking to you over the months, and I just want to thank the, the town council, Billy and everybody, Beth, for doing good. We, as a team, we did, we did a lot for this town in this last year, so, thank everybody, appreciate it.
Yeah, I would like to, Wayne, I totally agree with you, I'd like to thank the town, the employees, I'd like to thank the residents of the town and wish them a Merry Christmas. And Mr. DeMaio, it's, it's looking forward to wonderful development next year, and improvement to the town, I'm glad that you were able to bring this to town, and, yeah, really looking forward to the results, so thank you very much. And Merry Christmas to my fellow councilmen, and Beth.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to wish the town a Merry Christmas as well, and my fellow councilmen as well, Billy, Beth, Joe. It's been a good year, I'm happy with what we have accomplished, and I hope forward to next year as well.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
I think everybody's covered it.
Yeah?
All right, I-
Ditto, ditto, do. And I would just like to say, I, I'm just elated to be, and honored to be a part of this council and represent the residents of St. John. And like Wayne said, Wayne has a lot of passion for the town, I do appreciate it with the employees, the workers, everyone, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, likewise, my council members, Dell, and it's Jennifer, correct? Thank you for coming up here and taking the opportunity and the time to share with us and kind of expound so everyone has a clear understanding of what we're doing, we truly appreciate that. And I'd like to say thank you to our town manager, Billy Manassopoulos, for the tremendous Christmas party we had, we were able to honor and to share time with the workers of this town, and like Ann, and our clerk treasurer, I talked to Beth from time to time, this is what makes the wheel go around, is the workers, our police, our fire, our public works, the clerk treasurer department, the workers inside there. I mean, St. John, I truly feel has had a banner year, and it looked like a lot of thought and a lot of effort went into that Christmas party, and to honor our workers and our town. I want to thank you for that, Billy, you did a great job, and Merry Christmas. With that, we'll go to our clerk treasurer, Beth Hernandez.
Merry Christmas to everybody in the room, and all of our residents as well, and it has been an absolute pleasure to work with everybody up here, Joe, Billy, Ashley, Jackie, the council, it's, it's really been a great year, so, thank you, everyone. It's been a lot different, so.
In a good way.
In a good way, in a very good way.
Thank you for that. Agreed, agreed.
All right, so, with that, we'll move to item eight, adjournment.
Billy.
Billy, I'm sorry, I forgot the town, the town manager, all right?
I just wanted to echo what my colleagues at the council and the clerk mentioned, a Merry Christmas to all our residents, and anyone who's watching this, happy holidays. I also had the pleasure of working with these individuals that I am sitting next to. When I first came in, I was worried of what was going to happen, new place, new people, and I took the approach of, after meeting with them, meeting with my department heads, of biting off more than most people can chew, and through hard work, long hours, multiple phone calls, everything just, just came out great, terrific. We were able to, again, have the Christmas party this Friday, we were able to recognize all our employees from one year all the way up to 30 years. We went and had a great time, I was able to play bartender and to serve our loyal employees, some hors d'oeuvres and some drinks, and it'll be the first of many, I don't know how you always beat the first one, I know we've talked about it, but next year should be even better. So, I just want to say thank you again, and happy holidays.
Thank you, town manager, Billy. With that, we'll go to item eight, adjournment, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.